If you would go ahead and stand and join me as we say the pledge and have an invocation.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its front.
Lord, we thank you for today. We thank you for giving us another opportunity, Lord, to come here and to conduct the business of Walton County. Pray that you'll just give us the patience and the sermon that we need to make the right decisions based on what's best for the county and the citizens of Liberty. I see things in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Go ahead and open the meeting. Does everybody have a chance to read the minutes?
Motion in a second.
No, motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion in a second.
Aye.
Opposed? If motion carries. Announcements?
Mr. Chairman, we have several, we have a request to table and several continuances, and if you like, I'd go through those one by one if that's okay.
Yes, please.
Alright, number one on the agenda is Arnett's, Arnett Farmer's Market. They have a request to table this item.
Do we have a motion?
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, number four is Holiday Beachside Center. They have requested to continue to the March 10th Planning Commission Meeting at 5:00 in this location.
Do we have a motion to continue?
I make the motion.
Second.
No motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number five, Seacraft Small Scale Amendment has also requested to continue to the March 10th Meeting at 5:00 in this location.
No motion?
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number seven, Kaya PUD. They have requested to continue to March 10th Planning Commission Meeting at 5:00 in this location.
No motion? No motion. There are motions, Mr. Roberts, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Perry. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, number eight, Fox Lake Development Easements. They, this is a request to abandon some easements, and they have also requested to continue to the March 10th Planning Commission Meeting at 5:00 in this location.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No kidding. Mr. Chairman, and these continuances, it's a bit unusual to have this many, but there's various reasons. We had one involved litigation, one involved wanting to interact with the community a little more, and so they're at various stages, and I believe in those cases, the applicants felt it was best to continue rather than going forward. They wanted to have a clean, a clean project coming forward, and that's why you have these in this case. It's a bit unusual, so that's...
Before we get started, I would like to remind everybody, if you haven't already, please silence your phones. That way, we don't get interrupted too many times. And go ahead, Wayne.
And, Mr. Chairman, number two, Village Station, they have asked to move that to the end. There, I think there have been some discussions with some of the neighbors, and if it pleases the commission, we would like to move that one to the end of the, of the meeting agenda tonight.
That's fine.
And with that, that brings us to number three on the agenda, Warehouses of Cent Rosa Beach Two, formerly known as Sundial Phase Two. This is a, a project that Tim Brown from our office has been the project manager on, and I'll ask him to come forward and brief the, the planning commission on this item.
Thank you. Good evening. Tim Brown with Planning and Development. This project was continued from the January 14, 2016 Planning Commission Meeting. This is a major development order request, requesting to construct a new five-unit warehouse complex totaling 31,500 square feet on 5.74 acres with a future land use of light industrial. It's located on the west side of South County Road 393, north of Cypress Pond Road, and south of Edgewood Terrace. Public Works took a look at this project, and due to the surrounding circumstances, they required them to do the 100-year storm event, and the property to the north, Arnett Farmer's Market, there's a proposal to put a road from 393 over to Helen McCall Park. So Public Works also required them to stub out to the north to that potential road.
Okay.
They have a proportionate fair share requirement of $27,840 to mitigate the traffic and currency. There's, there's three conditions of approval from, from environmental that is included, and unless other evidence is presented to the contrary, the requested project is consistent with the Walton County Conference Plan and Land Development Code. I'll entertain any questions the board may have.
Mark, can you just wear by him first?
Yeah, I did. I'm glad you said that.
Yeah.
Anyone who just may testify before the board, now, please stand and raise your IBF. Do you solemnly swear or firm a testimony you're about to give before this floor?
I do.
Commissions, if any of you have any contact regarding any items on this hearing, then, for...
Okay. Anybody have any questions for staff on this project?
Thank you.
Is there an applicant?
I'm sorry, I must have missed it.
No, we haven't got there yet.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jamie Eubanks, EUBA NKS. We are the agent for the applicant. I think Tim addressed most of the project, but just to kind of go a little bit more detail, we do provide the 100-year storm event, as well as the stub access to the potential future road to the north. There's a pre-existing conservation easement at the rear of the site that will not be impacted. Other than that, I'd be more than happy to take any of your questions.
Do we have questions for applicant? You're gonna get lucky, maybe. No, none right now. So we'll let you...
I'll be here.
Okay. We'll go ahead and open the public portion of the, the hearing, and I have a couple people that have signed up to testify. John Harris. Yes, sir?
He's actually the owner.
Okay. Jamie Forbes?
I'm Jamie Forbes. I'm representing Betty Johnson, my mother-in-law, at 33 Edgewood Terrace, which is two parcels to this. It's on the other side of the Farmer's Market property.
I heard it was Betty...
Say it.
I heard it was Betty...
Johnson. Sorry. We met with staff several weeks ago when the first time this was continued. We have two concerns that we think might need to be stipulated, and, and one of them was discussed...
Before you go any further, we're looking at a picture here. We've got one in our books. Which one of those pieces of property are you able to see this picture?
The aerial, maybe.
Yeah, the aerial.
Okay. I'll let you help me. Okay.
Yeah, right there.
Alright, the parcel is, well, you can't see it. There's not a clear marker here, but...
There's the cursor.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's on the south side of Edgewood Terrace on 393. It has one single-family home on it.
Okay. Thank you.
But it's, and...
Can you see, see where the cursor, I don't know if you can see it?
Yeah, you might be able to see it from there. You've got another parcel between us and the parcel you're hearing today.
Okay.
There's a drainage ditch that you'll see in that aerial that runs from 393 down to the back of the property adjacent, and then out to the south, and then back to McCall Park. Part of that was dug many years ago, and has an easement at the part that's at Edgewood Terrace. The parcel we have, there is no easement, and it's on our property. We questioned at the time we brought it forward as to where the road was gonna go and what the future plan was, because Mr. Arnett owns both parcels. And as you know, he gave right-of-way for the road that goes to McCall Park. We questioned the access. I need to go back to the site plan. Let's see if I can do that.
Just have to use the...
Okay, there you go. And, and we discussed with Tim the access on the 393, knowing that the new road would allow access onto the new ro, on, onto that road, and eliminate that curb cut on the 393, which is within 70 feet of the turn out of the new road from McCall Park.
Are you still talking about the Arnett property?
Yes, sir.
That's not what we were talking about.
Yeah, this is not that.
No, he has both of them. They're both his, sir. Well, if you don't want to, if you, it's the, it's the warehouse property.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Right. And, and in the warehouse property, that quick turn, and the, and the property that we own there, that my mother-in-law owns, had a, was, was permitted me, I guess 2007, maybe, for a 13-unit subdivision, and staff eliminated any curb cuts on the 393 for limited access. You have the adjoining parcel, which has access to 393. You're about to have a road that comes in there, and you're gonna have an immediate right turn on the 393, and then an immediate right turn into this, which is a little bit of a stacking problem, and staff agreed that maybe that was gonna be an issue. We're glad to see the stub out. But there maybe ought to be a condition that when that stub out occurs, that this entrance might need to be closed, because if you have a lot of traffic at that exit, and people turning in, and people turning into the road, and there's no light, you're gonna have the same, you're gonna have additional problems. Just a comment, and that's about it.
Okay.
But the bigger problem is flooding. And my question to the engineers is, what kind of information did you use, and where does the water go that's being held on this property?
You'll have a chance to, just what dress, rest is up here. We'll let you ask.
Okay, alright, alright. Well, the question I ask is, both of these properties are in, both of these are trying to be permitted. We know that the backside of Mr. Arnett's piece on the flea market is in consideration for purchase for holding water, but right now, the water currently goes across his property into the ditch, comes back out to 393, and then crosses across my mother-in-law's property, in Edgewood Terrace, to that lake, across to the church, and out to Mr. Dugais' property, who's a friend, where he has the warehouses, and out to 98, to fall down all the way to Hogtown Bayou. There is a, there's an impediment to the drainage at Hogtown Bayou. And there's, in addition, Mr. Dugais noted to me that the culvert size that went under 98 was decreased in size when they put nine, when they widened 98 and did the things they did to it. We're just concerned that we're gonna end up with more water, and the biggest question is, where is all of this water going? When we discussed it with staff, there was a discussion, well, it'll pop off into the wetland. Well, that does, all that does is just put it in wetland, put it across the new road, and out. So we're just waving our hand about engineering and making sure that this water gets handled properly.
Okay.
Okay? We're not in opposition to the pro, to the project, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to, to speak on this topic before we close the public portion?
Staff already, uh...
Yes.
...made their comments?
Yeah.
Well, I got some questions, just in case the public wanted to comment on anything I said if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Questions of staff, or?
Yeah. But, I mean, the public may have commented about it before we close it, if I'm bringing up something new that they hadn't...
Okay.
...brought to them. I didn't see in my things, but is there any off-site mitigation besides what appears to be onsite mitigation taking place on this property?
I don't know. You'd have to ask the applicant. They are, they are filling a portion of the wetlands for that back parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
Not within the existing conservation easement. There's already conservation, conservation easement there, and that's not being affected, but they are filling a portion of the wetlands in order to put that parking lot in the back. I'm not privy to what kind of mitigation that requires, however...
It wasn't part of the conditions of approval, and that's why I was concerned. Typically, if they're doing off-site mitigation, there's a comment to that effect, other than just the regular state and federal permits. But, I mean, that may be what this says, but that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, typically, that's handled by the permitting agencies. You have to mitigate in order to get your state and federal permit.
So what I'm trying to understand from your question is that the western portion of the property that says conservation, conservation or conservation is exactly, is already recorded, and is not part of, it's not anything that's being taken as part of this?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So I guess I'll direct that to staff, and regarding engineering for stormwater runoff, do we have an engineer here? County's engineers, chance?
We have Preble Rish here. Preble Rish initially reviewed it, and then after we met with the gentleman that was just up, they initially did the 25-year storm. But after meeting with him, we asked Public Works to look at it. Public Works required the 100-year storm, so that's what they're doing, the 100-year storm.
Okay, then that's my question, I guess made about the engineering regarding the detention or retention areas. I noticed that they were only a, it looks like a three-foot fall inside, inside the proposed basins. That's as much as it gets, and that's gonna be adequate to carry a 100-year storm. Is that what I could hear testified from staff, engineer?
Yes, I was sworn.
Bill Menedear with Preble Rish. And to answer your question, yes, that is adequate. We'd require them to size the system for the 100-year storm event with the drawdown required by the county, and the system's adequate.
And the soil types are not being changed below the grade for percolation, what's given there?
Correct.
Because if I'm looking right, the part, the fill area is gonna be a detention-retention area, part of the, excuse me, I guess it'll be off-site mitigating.
I'll address it.
Yeah, alright. What I wanted to know is, when engineering took that into account, did they take into account what kind of soil's gonna be put in there in the base of those things? I didn't want it to be a clay bottom that holds water, it looks like a pond, that's gonna be either some sort of exfiltration system, or it's gonna be a highly permeable soil.
It is gonna be a high...
I didn't see those conditions, and here's why I'm asking, 'cause everybody knows that, you know, South Walton's got huge flooding problems because of development. And everything we can do to ameliorate or mitigate those circumstances, I wanna be sure that we've taken it into account, that we're doing those things. So we're not putting clay down on the bottom of those ponds.
We're not putting clay down on the bottom of the ponds.
Okay, thank you. Chairman, if there's any questions?
Mr. James?
I'll address, I forget his name, excuse me, the, the first two comments, as well as Mr. Kramer's kind of ties hand in hand with the stormwater. As mentioned, they did approach the county. County asked us to increase the storm into a 100-year event. We did take that into consideration, did make that design change, and Mr. Kramer's concern is no clay, none of that in this particular case. Regarding the access, and just to clear it up, too, this is actually not one of the Arnett pieces. He does not own this property.
Is that to the south of the subject property?
The Arnett is actually to the north.
Right.
This is to the south, correct.
The piece for the stubout is, is to the south, right?
Right. There's actually a stubout both sides. There, there's the existing Phase One to the south, and then to the north is the potential county-sponsored roadway that'll go to Helen McCall Park. In regards to the access, we are actually much further than 70 feet, and I believe from proposed driveway for Helen McCall Park to this particular piece, it was, off the top of my head, in excess of 100 feet. We actually did take that into consideration. Staff, Greg Graham, did ask us to look into that. We respectfully request that in the future that access, that access not be cut. Multiple reasons. First, just from a flat business standpoint, it's difficult for a developer to get a lender to agree with a condition that says in the future your access is gonna be cut from 393. The second reason for a particular site such as this, where it's a warehouse, and you may have not necessarily many trips, but you may have some larger vehicles coming in, circulation is an issue. It's much better to have multiple accesses where they can pull straight through from one end to the other. And then third, and probably the most important, I guess, actually had a decent conversation with Sammy Sanchez from South Walton Fire Department, and I'm comfortable standing up here saying that Sammy requested that that access not be eliminated in the future for life safety and fire reasons. He stressed that the more access, the more access, the better, in terms of life safety and fire.
We're talking about, you're speaking specifically to the one on the south side of the...
No, we're actually speaking on 393, Mr. Kramer. That was the, the request to remove was from 393. And those are my responses to those items. Be happy.
The stubout that goes to the south of the property, I noticed that it runs right over a pond, per, per area.
It's actually a gravel parking area. It's just for emergency between the two pit, two parcels.
Good. But how's it gonna affect the swale in there?
The swale is actually piped underneath.
Ask all your questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else have any questions? Yes, sir.
Can you give us some exact dimension on that? You said it was greater than 100 feet. We scaled it, and it wasn't. That's why I brought it up.
I'd have to measure it in CAD, but I can, just from the drawing, it is...
That's a 40-foot right there.
I don't know if this was on there or not.
I wanna make sure the information's... And this is where your cut starts, is beyond the end of the 40 feet.
Right. So from center of driveway is 12 feet, plus there's an additional 40-feet loading zone, so that's 52, plus there's an additional 40 feet from...
About 16.
That's from the rear of the building, so...
Yeah, but your curve, your curve actually starts way into that...
Understand. Well, I see what you're saying. Access management within the Land Development Code is actually defined from center line to center line. That's how I was measuring that. I couldn't tell you what it is from the exact...
But a, but a semi-trailer pulling into that location would have the back end when it starts its turn, would still be out almost to the curb cut from the new road. That, that was the purpose. The second, the second question I have is, it says life safety. Life safety also has to take into consideration traffic and issues related to traffic.
Right.
And was that discussed with the road, the road department?
Traffic and currency is, is a part of the standard development review process.
Yeah, for me, I've done a few.
Approximately seven PMP power trips, if I remember correctly.
With the addition of Helen McCall Park?
Helen McCall Park is not a part of this property.
Right.
Understand, but it's about to be, but it, but it is about to be a part of the traffic to, that, was that considered in this drawing? Because it is a right-of-way to build a road.
That's not a part of this project, so it's not, they wouldn't be responsible for that.
No, but, but traffic would be responsible for, roadways would be responsible for knowing that that, when we came in, staff did not, was not aware that this road was being built for the two projects that were gonna be put next to it. And on the other project, they had put a curb cut into the new road, and that's where you access, which limits access to 393, which helps the traffic situation on 393.
Okay.
That's it, okay?
Thank you.
One more question for the applicant. I noticed that there was a loading zone back there in the corner. Is there a dumpster area that I've not been able to find on the...
There is. There's actually, they are going to jointly use Phase One's dumpster, save costs.
And are they by the same, by the same person?
Yes.
And staff approved that?
It was in the development application, and there's a large note on the plans.
There is, about that?
Yes. It's the note.
And that'll be on the recorded plans as well?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay. And that's, that meets all requirements?
I have a quick question. How many residents live in the general area around this project? How many?
Turn around.
Okay. How many homes and residents live in this general area?
To my knowledge, the closest residence would be to the north.
Edgewood Terrace.
Edgewood Terrace, which is a, I believe, a townhome apartment complex. Within, well, I can tell you from doing our mailouts, we're required to mail out within 300 feet.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, this is really diverse.
Like 35, 40?
Uh, we had approximately 12 mailouts within 300 feet.
You can see it on the air.
Okay.
And most of those were commercial sites within the vicinity.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the one to the south is, is the existing, there's an existing business there. They're the same owner.
Right.
On the other side of 393, you see the one? That's Emerald Coast Associates Offices, and then you get, what's it called?
Edgewood Terrace has the single-family, and then there's a, if you go further, well, that particular, I'm pointing this, if you guys can see it. The piece right off 393, I believe, is Edgewood Townhomes, if I'm not mistaken on the name. I could be.
And how far are you from the entrance to the little, what do you call it? It's an equestrian place where people go in there with their children to go and ride their horses.
Yeah, I'm familiar. That, we did that project. I'm trying to think. It's probably a good quarter-mile at a minimum.
Okay.
Yeah, the reason that was okay is 'cause this is Phase Two of the project.
Any other questions for applicant? Go ahead and close the public portion of the hearing. Commissioners?
I don't have any questions.
I'm com, comfortable with it. Need a motion, or?
A motion?
A motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Just to be clear, motion approved with the condition of...
Right.
Village Station, you're brought to the board.
Yes, yes. Before we move any further, Mr. Dias?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to take just a minute. I forgot to introduce our new commissioner tonight, Ms. Nina Horns. Her first meeting. Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Hope you enjoy it as much as David does.
(laughing)
Please, not that much.
The next item will be, that is number six.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the next item is the petition for abandonment. This is a petition for abandonment by Derek Ballard. It's, it's described as North Water Street, located immediately south of lots 11 and 12, block 21 of the town of Cent Rosa Beach Platte. The project is located on Cent Rosa Street adjacent Hogtown Bayou and Cent Rosa Beach. This is a kind of interesting application for abandonment. As you can see from the photograph here, the area that's highlighted in crosshatches, that is the area that is South Water Street, and that is what is requested to be abandoned. In your packet, you'll see several bits of information from the early 90s, and both of the, South Water Street once went along the whole entirety of the water. Both sides of the site have previously been abandoned by the Board of County Commissioners back in the early 90s, I believe. And this particular piece was not abandoned, and tonight, Mr. Ballard is requesting this to be abandoned. Interestingly, it has a home located on it. I believe this was his father's home, who has recently passed away. He's trying to clear up the estate, and this, this area of South Water Street exists and has a home on it, and this is why he has requested this to be abandoned. And again, both sides of the, of this, of this piece of property were once part of South Water Street, but they have previously been abandoned by the commission. This is the part in the middle that has not been requested, and it's still there. So with that, I believe that the applicant's here as well, if you have questions of him, but that's, that's the, that's the situation. This is an application that the board will make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners on, and they will make the final decision as far as the abandonment.
Do you want to have any questions of staff?
Just one, by my, Mr. Chairman. In your researcher and staff's research for this, the Department of Army for the Corps of Engineers back in 85 was requesting that this piece get a permit, because I guess whatever was going on there at the time didn't meet the course. And I just wanted to find out, without reading every detail on this and looking for, 'cause I didn't find the letter that said it was approved.
I have, I have no information on the Corps of Engineers issue.
I'm not familiar with the late 80s. I think, was it approved in the 90s, or, or 80, about mid-'80s, right after that?
Mr. Ballard might answer that question, but David, I don't have any information to that, that has...
I just didn't see an approval of it, or, so that's my question.
Okay. The applicant?
Yes, sir. My name's, oh, I'm sorry. Man, I don't know what we're doing here.
That's alright.
Y'all forgive me, man. This is my first road.
We gotta get you closer, that way in case you get a throat shot.
I'm nervous. I'm nervous already. Uh, my name is Derek Ballard, and I'm, I'm representing my father, my deceased father's estate. He passed away in July of two thousand and fifteen. And, um, as I was doing my research after daddy passed away, because, uh, we still have a mortgage on the home, he had debt on the home, we're trying to get everything situated to put it on the market, um, I started doing my research, and I realized that everybody's property lines across, uh, that south portion of Mills Bayou goes down to the water with the exception of my father's. So I went, well, why in the world is that? So I started doing my research and found that the other, that was going to be North Water Street, by the way, back in the early whenever, nineteen hundreds, when they mapped out the town of Santa Rosa. Undoubtedly, they were gonna put a North Water Street running parallel with the water. Well, of course, that never came to fruition, and I think, um, and I went ahead and reached out to Public Works and Quentin Smith, and, and I think they've discussed it with Mark when I reached out to them originally as well. And David, to answer your question, yes, sir, I have the documentation, and I turned it in. You do have it somewhere? In nineteen eighty-five, they, uh, Corps of Engineers and DEP did a, a cease and desist letter to dad. And, um, then he, I guess, did his mitigation, did what he was supposed to do, and they approved it, and that is in your paperwork, where they said the site is approved, the doc is approved, he had followed all the instructions of it, and they thanked him for it.
Didn't see the stamp.
Yes.
Typical, but since that was back in the eighties, it might not be typical like you see it today.
Yes, sir.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, I did have a question for the applicant.
Sure.
Uh, regarding, uh, the legal description on your property.
Yes, sir.
Could you tell me, uh, in lot and block terms, how much property in your family estate right there?
Yes, sir. Um, it, it, as it, as it sits, it is, what, right now, without the abandonment, David, it says it's one point five four acres. And that's lots seven through fifteen, block twenty-one, town of Santa Rosa. Uh, the surrounding properties, David, say lots, block, and the.
But I'm just saying, you own, my, what I wanted to get at.
Yes, sir.
Because it's not really clear.
Yes, sir.
That you own lots eleven and twelve.
Seven through fifteen.
Yeah, so, well, that's all, I, that's all I really needed to know.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Just wanted to be sure, because then if we abandon that, the owners of both of those parcels would, so.
No, sir, we own.
Still might create a complication for you.
Daddy, daddy owns, daddy owns, uh, that whole, the whole part, and if you'll look on the survey of the parcel, it's four cement monuments that have been there forever and ever from point to point down to the high water line.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for that? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, nobody signed up to speak? Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address this issue? You, you can, you can sit down.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thanks, sir.
CNN will close the public portion of the hearing. Commissioners?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Chairman, last item on the agenda is back to number two, Village Station. I'll ask Mr. Carpenter to come up and, uh, brief the board on this particular application.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is a major development order, uh, request to approve, uh, seventeen thousand square feet of shopping center on two point five three acres with the future land use of small neighborhood. This is phase three of the villages of Blue Mountain Beach on the north side of thirty A. Phase three was originally approved back in two thousand and five. It had a BCC final order that had no expiration date. The property has changed hands, uh, since originally approved. The two parcels on either side of the main boulevard going into this particular property are the subjects, um, to L-shake parcels on the south side of the development, or actually, the west side of the development, I suppose, the thirty A side. The applicant has reconfigured the seventeen thousand feet of commercial space that was previously approved. And has come back with a full technical submittal with some revisions to the original plan. It's still within the, uh, original approval extent of seventeen thousand square feet of commercial. Yeah, and is here and, uh, prepared to further explain their project. Are there any further questions for me? I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for staff?
Matt, can you tell me or tell the board what the impervious surface ratio of this project is?
Uh, phase three?
Yes, as, as, as it's similar to us. And I also wanted to, uh, ask you or, uh, the director, uh, how the ordinance of no new commercial development within two hundred and fifty feet of a residential preservation area affects this property, and if it does not, why not?
It does not. The BCC approved a seventeen thousand square foot commercial parcel. That final order is still in effect. Uh, so we did not consider that again. This is the full technical of a previous BCC approval. And we have to honor that approval.
Are you telling me that if the BCC had not previously approved it, that that particular ordinance would affect the commercial development of this property?
If this were a brand new property, it might.
And that particular issue's under appeal right now. I'd rather not get too much into that because. The, the two hundred and fifty foot separation between commercial uses, um, that David's talking about, we have two cases right now that are pending in front of zoning board adjustments, um, that deals with that very same issue, and so. So, I mean, you know.
Okay.
That will be addressed in time as far as the applicability of that to other projects.
But as far as this project, it was a pre.
Right. Doesn't affect this project.
I probably have other questions. When we were doing the parking calculations for you and/or engineering, um, what, uh, what was the basis for? Was it general business, or how were the parking, uh, calculation was achieved? And if so, were any, were there a specific number of square footage used for, uh, restaurant calculations? Because there's, of course, our doctor's offices, which are in a higher rate, and I just wondered how they were achieved.
It was used at the shopping center rate of five spaces per one thousand square feet.
Which takes into effect all those things already.
It assumes a mix of those.
And when you say shopping center, are they typically retail only, or are they also mixed use when you're considering the parking calculations for those things? Because if they, this is a multi-story development, if I'm not mistaken, just a single story? And I, I'm not sure whether or not there are professional offices, doctor's offices specifically included in, because I know they have a higher parking issue. Wanted to make sure that, given our stormwater stuff, that we're taking even in the little pieces of it.
I don't think a doctor's office was proposed as one of the arguments of this particular center.
Uh, another question.
Yes, sir.
As you might imagine, I noticed on the plan, there was only, uh, one loading area on the, uh, north portion, the north, west portion of the parking area, and that's all that's required. Is that correct?
Uh, one space per twenty-five thousand square feet.
Okay, uh, let's see. Regarding some of the, uh, planning department comments, uh, just below the public comments in the report, there was, uh, questions about the, uh, operational analysis would be conducted. Is there a traffic study that needs to be done or has been done? It wasn't in our package, or is it supposed to be done, or is it a condition of our?
A traffic study has been done. Uh, there was a, a, a final order condition that suggested that a turn lane might be warranted at some point in the future.
That's what that referred to. So it said in here that the Village of Blue Mountain, so the actual traffic data could be utilized for the operational analysis. And I didn't know if that was going to be considered a condition of our approval at all.
Uh, at present, it is not a condition of this approval. It could certainly be offered up if, if the board chose to.
Do you know, uh, I have a bunch of questions, actually. Uh, do you know if the fence issue that the homeowners and the meeting, pretty obvious meetings has been, uh, because it wasn't, it's not, the landscape of the plan was kind of woefully short of details. So I was kind of curious to whether or not the fence that was required, or mentioned several times in my package, has been resolved issue or not yet.
I'm not sure that, that I can speak to that directly. The applicant very well may have, but I know there's still been some negotiations, uh, possibly even as we speak. A fence to separate the commercial and the residential was a condition of the original final order from two thousand and five?
Yes.
Um, and we would expect that.
specifications.
We would expect that to continue to be honored, because we're still operating under that final order unless the BCC chooses to waive that, once we get there.
Would you, uh, recommend, uh, for us, and our recommendation to, or depending on how staff's met with the public, that a specific height or length of that fence in certain areas be added to, to make it more specific than the general language that we kind of had, what I've read?
Uh, at present, I don't have a recommendation for the, the extent of that. I know they've shown some amount of that on the plan, um, but the applicant could probably discuss that.
About it, and it was men, mentioned in ninety percent of the letters in our package, so I was curious to see if that is resolved. There's no gates as part of this, so there won't be any, uh?
There are gates to the existing residential portion of this development that have been added since the original approval by less than minor development order. Those gates are outside the extent of this particular, uh, entrance to the commercial area, I believe, yeah.
Yeah, I need to know that, that's one of my questions. Were those gates, if they're located in, in the project, and who's going to take the expense to move them, and where they approved, when they were installed?
They were, they were approved.
And they're private roads, though.
Yes, and they're private roadways, uh, not eligible to be taken over by the county due to the paper.
You're understanding that the, uh, gates that exist, or this project won't affect gates that exist, or won't interfere with how they, because they're, I don't know how close they are, and what kind of stacking will have of that intersection. Because intersection so close to thirty A already, if there's any real drag time in that, and it's a pretty high-density subdivision, although it's not completely built out. As it continues to, that stacking could become an intersection to be out on the thirty A, and I just wonder.
And there will be another condominium building, because there's a separate owner of that particular parcel that is moving forward with developing the fourth condominium building there that's.
So as staff, uh, forward looking at this gate issue, have you made any recommendations?
We have not. We have not made any recommendations for that to be changed.
Okay. Um, my other questions were, um, let's see. I talked about the loading, uh, yeah, I guess it was off street later, but, uh, is there a buyout for sidewalks on this property?
Um.
See that list up in, how do we call, if there was a sidewalk in front of the building or not?
I don't recall. I'll have to double check.
I can answer. As well as a number of, uh, Mr. Kramer's questions.
Great. Yeah, just in case, uh, could take care of right now, I'll just. And typically, uh, stormwater pollution prevention plan, uh, those are, are general conditions of our, uh, a lot of developments that we get received. Is it, uh, is it typical, or would it be more beneficial for planning and developments since storm are such a hot button issue that, or is it just premature to ask for that at a planning stage, at this stage? That we could actually see that the applicant has got a stormwater pollution prevention plan in place?
You want to speak to that, Dean?
I can.
Okay. We'll talk to this. I think if I have to, I'll get back to you, but I think the applicant can probably handle most of that.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have right now.
Dean?
Good evening. Dean Burgess with Emerald Coast Associates, representing the applicant, and I'm the engineer of record. I have not been sworn.
Do you want to swear or inform the testimony you're about to give before this?
I do. Um, I'll see if I can remember all of, uh, Mr. Kramer's questions.
Impervious surface ratio.
Impervious surface ratio is point seven six, I believe, fifty-seven point six percent. Uh, sixty percent is, is required.
Oh, point five, because I thought you said point seven six. It's point five seven six.
Right.
And that includes the, uh, per, impervious areas that'll be extending to the east as, as parking areas.
That's correct. Yes, sir. Um, regarding the, uh, loading area, I think you brought up, um, staff asked that we, uh, locate a second loading area, um, in, because they are separated by the road. Technically, the code doesn't require it. It's, uh, by project, it's twenty-five thousand square feet. We have provided a, um, second loading area. We, we had more parking than was required, so.
Can you give me an idea where it is?
Sure. This is the, uh, plan. Unfortunately, it wasn't in your packet, but we added a loading area here for this building, and this is the existing loading area. I think you had a question about parking. We did use, um, shopping center as our, our parking category. Uh, the reason for that is, um, as of right now, we don't know who the tenants will be, so it's the most reasonable, uh, application to, to put in for, uh, for parking. It does require more parking than if we were to go general business, of course, is where a lot of these, uh, proposals go to, and you end up with a doctor's office or a restaurant, and you have trouble with parking. It's probably worth mentioning that we did not take the twenty percent rear parking discount. And, and we've got five spaces, uh, over the, the required parking. Regarding a fence, we have added a five-foot tall. We, we decided to assert a five-foot height, uh, on the fence. I believe that's, that's reasonable without getting, uh, you know, overly encumbering looking. Um, it'll be a, a wood shadow box type fence, uh, along.
Elevation on that property that runs toward residential on the north, that's because it could go up a street there. And would that, is that where there'll be a fence on the, uh, north boundary between your property and, or the applicant's property and Metan's?
Um, there will be a, uh, wall and fence along the northern and on the southern property boundary. Basically, we're gonna tie it into the building, because it kind of doesn't make sense to put a fence in front of the building. Um, so we're gonna tie it from the building, um, to parking lot, and parking lot to lot line. Also, there's been some discussion between the internal, um, uses of the project, though the code doesn't require, um, buffers between internal mixed, uh, internal uses of a mixed-use development. Uh, we have agreed with the neighbors, um, on our, it would be the east side of the parking lot. Between our commercial development and multifamily, uh, development here, we're gonna, uh, either plant a burn and landscaping, or perhaps a fence, but there will be some form of screening that we agree upon with the, the neighbors.
That should be, uh, much room for a burn in there.
Well, we discussed, uh, it would have to be partially on our property and partially on theirs. If you look at that, there's nearly ten feet there. Uh, there's probably about eight feet, um, between there that we can get some kind of screening, uh, between the uses.
And this is nothing, the staff's gonna require it, or be on the plant, on the plant, this is just something you're gonna do with the neighbors?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. I appreciate that.
If there are any further questions, I'd be happy to.
I'm sure Mr. Kramer got two or three more.
Well, a lot of them had to do with the applicants. Let me go over the drawings, make sure I have, uh, yeah, that's what it was. Stormwater is exfiltration.
Yes, sir.
It's all exfiltration.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, can you tell me what depth the chambers are going to be set at without going up that plan? And that whole, I mean, that's why I used to own that property, and so I walked it, know it intimately, but I want to know at what depth they're gonna be and what the soil makeup is at that depth, and make sure that in that exfiltration system, that there is adequate permeability. That's all I can say. So can you explain to myself and the board?
Sure.
How big the, I think I, I, the number doesn't really matter to me, but your engineering and county's engineering agrees that the exfiltration systems meet the standards, and did you guys go for the twenty-five, or did you bump it all the way up to the hundred year float as well?
Um, we went to the, the fifty, I'm sorry, the twenty-five year storm, but there is no discharge, uh, from the system, uh, during those storms. So, you know, typically, you're allowed to have a pre-development, uh, allowable discharge. We don't have any discharge from the, uh, the systems, uh, at that rate.
I would, uh, bring your attention to this, is the neighborhood immediately south of where there's development. There's very, very little development on the, on that property now, so consequently, there's a lot of absorption of the soils. I want to see that, you know, that is kind of either taken care of or certainly not added to.
Sure.
So, uh, in my excellent, in my question is, I guess, at what depth do you recall, or do you recall, uh, that the chambers are going to be set at?
Um, I think the deepest one is four to four. I think the deepest one is four to four-and-a-half feet deep, and the, we did hire our geotechnical engineer.
Did you boreings out there?
Yes, we did boreings, and the permeability rate was surprisingly high.
Great.
Extremely high. We basically used the Northwest Florida Water Management District's highest allowable permeability, which was less than half of what was measured by the geotech.
To shore up these tanks that you guys aren't putting clay in the pumps as well?
Right.
I'd like to ask these questions now. You're not, are you?
That we're not doing what?
Not putting clay in the bottoms of the hole of all of your tanks.
No, I wouldn't see any reason to do that.
Sure. I mean, stormwater's just such a big deal.
Sure.
I want to make sure that, you know, we've got developers who either have to live around here or have lived around here, and so they understand why I ask these nitpicky questions. All right, God, that's about the exfiltration. On the landscaping plan, there wasn't anything to reflect plants in the buffer there. Are they planning on, besides the fences, are they planning on being any plantings reflected in the landscape plan?
Basically, what's on the property, along the northern and western boundaries, and even the southern boundaries where the landscape buffers are, is the native vegetation. We intend to utilize that native vegetation as our landscaping. And as a matter of fact, in order to accomplish that, we've placed a retaining wall along the northern side where all that grade change is, in an effort to be able to utilize that rather than just grading it out and replanting it.
I don't recall it being very, it's not got scrub oaks, so it's just got rosy Mary and...
It's sand pine and probably more sand pine than any scrub oaks.
Right. I guess that didn't fully go long, long ago before we bought it. My last, almost my last question, Mr. Chairman. On the lighting plan, I saw that you were using a three-hundred-and-fifty watt, I don't know whether incandescent or probably light or, are you familiar with?
Yeah, the lighting plan, we did have incandescent lights.
Okay. I didn't see a, and I may have just missed it, I didn't see a detail on what that fixture looked like, and at what elevation. Apparently, they're going to be at some kind of elevation, given the lighting plan, but could you tell me for...
Is that required for this hearing, or, I mean?
A lighting plan is required, yes, sir. For a parking lot lighting?
Right.
Yes, sir.
There's, yeah, I didn't want it to be spilled over into the neighbor's backyard.
I understand.
And the numbers show that it's not, but I just wanted to get a real sense of it. If you could tell me, are these, you know, ten-foot poles, eight-foot, six-foot, twenty-foot?
If I'm remembering correctly, they were set at fifteen feet.
Really? That seems... And who does the lighting, who did you guys do to use this lighting calculations in force, lumens at that distance?
We do it internally. We've got a program that we utilize internally within ECA.
I mean, do you have a meter that you go out there and stand up on what would be the neighbor's lawn, and how do you, how do you make that determination for the three-hundred-and-fifty watt?
It's based on data that's published by the light manufacturer. They, you input that data into the program, and it's a lighting model that we do, and it produces the...
And does, do our engineers have staff, do they have programs like that to confirm that stuff?
No, we take what the applicant submits. They have, you have a sheet in your package that shows all the lumens.
Yeah.
Because if they don't have enough lumens meet their requirements, then we don't go back and model everything over again. We don't. We take what they submit us.
And that has a stamp on it, I'm guessing, just an engineer's stamp on that?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'm required to review it and seal it.
Okay. I know that it's high elevation, you know, personally, and I don't think because of the construction that's out there, it's going to affect any turbid lighting in that distance from the Gulf, even though it's pretty high and you're adding another fifteen feet to it. Fifteen feet seems excessive to me, but I, I'm not one of the neighbors that...
Right. Well, there's a balance between, you know, nuisance lighting and minimum security lighting. Somebody twists an ankle in the parking lot, we've got a problem also. So we carefully evaluate that whenever we're doing these plans.
There are spillovers, especially onto the condo immediately to the, I guess it's the east of the central parking lot. There's a lot of spillover onto that. Have, I don't know if you and staff have discussed that, or have the neighbors, because it seems to be, I don't know that it's outside the, probably, it looks like you're locating the security lighting on the east side of the parking lot, on those medians on the east side, rather than on the west side right behind the building. Is that what I'm reading on the lighting?
That's correct. They're located in these landscape lines, but the light is directed towards the buildings, and then they'll be building fountain lights.
They have lines or something on them?
I believe those fixtures were full cutoff fixtures.
I didn't see the detail of it, that's why I'm asking these silly questions, or seemingly silly questions.
I believe on the plan, it has a legend, and that, within that legend, it should say that it's a full cutoff lighting.
All right, and just want to be sure that those things are taken into consideration. Does the numbers look a little high on that condo that kind of backs up to you there? And they're as high as one-point-four on the building, and one-point-seven possibly, but I don't think that's on the buildings, in front of the building. It seems to drop off pretty quickly. Did you guys consider putting the lighting on the other side by your buildings, or because the way they're shielded, it's actually more effective to run it away from the hall owners on that side?
Yes, that was the idea, was that, so that you don't get any nuisance lighting where you're looking at the bulb or the light source.
I believe this, Mr. Chairman, but I think that's all I have.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr., we're open the public portion of the meeting, Richard Foquet.
I don't believe I've been sworn in.
Do you want to swear or form the testimony you're about to give before this?
I do.
Could you just go to the last one, please?
F-O-U-Q-U-E-T. I just kind of have a question, I guess, for about the project. The small neighborhood future land use category states that each small neighborhood shall provide for a mixture of uses to encourage economic diversity and sustainability within the area, promote the future viability of the neighborhood, and encourage a walking and bicycle-friendly design to conserve energy and reduce emissions. How does this project accomplish these code intentions, and specifically, how does it promote mixture of uses, and how does it encourage a walking and bicycle-friendly environment? Basically, because I don't see a sidewalk that affronts Highway County Thirty-A, one of the busiest roads in the county, so, and how is it connected to the neighborhood?
Okay. Thank you. Does the applicant answer that?
The mixture of uses was reviewed at the time of the master plan. The overall development accomplishes that mixture of uses, and very possibly the commercial element answers Mr. Kramer's question of the, the commercial being within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of RPA. Well, small neighborhood requires that you have commercial, so you either satisfy the land use category, there was a conflict with the code, basically, and I'm sure that's, that was discussed. Yeah, imagine that. We do have a sidewalk. Again, that was one of the staff comments, that was at our last meeting that we responded to. We have added a sidewalk along Thirty-A, and there's internal sidewalks that provide connectivity throughout the remainder of the development.
Okay. How wide's that front sidewalk?
Five feet.
Five feet.
Five feet.
That answer your question, sir?
It does. Could we request eight feet? I mean, I know the sidewalk that's currently on Thirty-A.
Wait, come to the microphone.
Is actually at eight feet, I believe, for the most part of the county.
It's a multi-use pad.
It's a multi-use pad.
The reason is they're not required, you know, for the sidewalk.
Well, we just guess at some point we have to address County Thirty-A as being pedestrian-friendly and bicycle-friendly and accommodate automobiles, so.
You got room to do it eight feet, Dean?
There's probably space to do eight feet. Of course, there's also stormwater problems on Thirty-A. You've got to have room for stormwater improvements.
Right.
We settled in on five feet. I think that would be sufficient.
Okay.
And also, on behalf of my neighborhood, so I own a house in Blue Golf Resort, which is just south of there. If I could submit some notes, I'm not sure if he emailed them to you or not, from Peter Broley.
Yes, I have to be, and they all kind of come.
Yeah, we have all those.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I'm Robert McGill, and I'm representing the Blue Mountain Beach Master Owners Association.
Were you sworn in?
I'm not.
It's because you saw me swear or form the testimony you're about to give before this.
I do.
Okay.
Good. Representing the master association and the Village Place Condominium Association, we're not going to object to the project moving forward. We do want to state for the record that, and it's kind of the reason that we got shuffled down a little bit on the agenda tonight, we requested Mac do that for us, so we could talk to the developer a little bit. We have been talking to him about the parking on the north arm that goes, runs east and west, and in negotiations with them right now on that parking, and then possibly reducing the intensity of the use on the front as the parking is reduced, or if we were able, successfully able to negotiate with them on the parking. So, what I really want to say for the record is that we want to reserve any comments that we have with regard to the existing development order that they're proceeding under and so forth. If we're not able to reach an agreement, we'll be back before the Board of County Commissioners that we would then present our arguments at that time. But I just want to go on the record to say that we were here, and we're reserving those arguments kind of in lieu of if we can't work something out with the developer at this time.
Appreciate it.
Just to ask, answer one of David's other questions. We have worked out with the existing owner on the perimeter of the property, a landscape buffer, and we are going to work with them. We're not, I think we're able to work with the developer on going ahead and getting the berm and the fencing that Dean was talking about, that kind of separates wherever the developer's parking is going to stop and ours, so that we'll have a berm and some landscaping. And so, we worked out that with the existing owner to go ahead and get that landscape buffer in.
And that was internally, inside the Blue Mountain Beach subdivision. Some of the issues that you still have to work out, is that what you're discussing?
No, the issues that we have to work out are directly with the developer, and it's the master association, the Blue Mountain Beach master, and the Village Place Condominium that are working with them to see if we can reduce some of the intensity and talk to them about the parking on the north arm. So that's, we're not objecting to that going forward, and we're not making it a, I don't think we really have to make it a provision of the development order going forward. We don't mind if y'all put it in there, that there is some buffer between our internal parking and their parking, but I think we've worked that out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? See, no one will close the public portion of the hearing?
I have just one more question of the applicant, because, and it really is nothing I think, but I'd like you to talk about it. You think that there'll be, is there a curve between the buildings and the parking lot? I mean, there's actually a curve there, right? Because I noticed that...
Yes, there's a curve that backs up to the side.
Okay, because it was only five feet between the building at the northeast corner there. I don't know what building, they're not numbered or anything, but that parking, that was just a five-foot place. And one other place in there that was only five feet as well, and that's at the north end of the south buildings. But it's just barely that five foot. And I just wanted to find out if there wasn't a curve that, you know, that's a curve in bumper guards would be put in, because, I mean, a bumper can stick over three foot, there wouldn't be room for a wheelchair to get around.
Right. So we've got a five-foot sidewalk plus the half-foot of curb that will also eat, double as a parking bumper, so we don't have parking bumpers everywhere.
All I'll say to that is on those two spots there, because it's right out by the street, and I don't, I'm looking at my thing where the handicap parking spots are, and I was thinking of it for them, because if a car, typically some cars can stick over old Cadillacs or something, you know, they could stick out there two-and-a-half feet into that five-foot sidewalk, and it's right up there in the building, then would prevent things for wheelchair access. So maybe on just those two spots in front of those two buildings, an extra curb bumper offsetting a little on one or two of those parking spots might be something to consider. And we're not talking, you know, a hundred percent.
Sure. That would, that would make sense to...
Yeah, just bringing that to your attention.
All right.
To the developer's attention.
Appreciate it.
I have one question. At the timeframe of construction, how long do you think it will take to actually construct this project, and how can we minimize the traffic flow? Because Thirty-A's been congested for so long, especially down near Draper Lake where they've been redoing the bridge.
I'm a site construction guy. I'm not so much a builder as far as the buildings. I don't know how long the buildings would take. I would say the site infrastructure for this would be relatively quick, probably on the order of three months, maybe four months, and it could occur concurrently with the building construction. I'm going to, I'm going to take a guess and say the buildings may take eight months, you know, start to finish. So I think the projects start to finish, we're probably looking at, on the long side, eight months, short side, maybe six. And fortunately, there's enough room in the parking lots for construction vehicles and workers to park in the parking lot itself while the buildings are being constructed. So I don't think we're looking at having, you know, cars parked along Thirty-A or anything of that sort.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ministers?
I want to make a, I don't know, I want to discuss, for discuss first, I make a motion to approve with conditions, and I want to see if, I'll go back and see if any of those conditions were...
I'll second. amended. I did. Yeah, I think those conditions you were talking about are already in there.
Yeah, they're in there.
Yeah, most of them. I just wanted to be sure. Go ahead and give me, give me just a second. Staff only has one condition for approval, and that's in their report, and outside of that, I wanted to also, there were several other things that they made reference to that I think the developers worked with in that, that they wanted us, they wanted us to amend the utility and landscape plan, which we didn't see the show, the fence and stuff. You haven't turned those in yet, we've just been discussing them, is that right?
They have been turned in, but they did not make it into your packet, so they are in staff's hands for review.
Also, the five-foot sidewalk, one was turned in?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the...
And the loading zone as well.
Pardon?
The loading zone is on those drawings also, the second loading zone.
And the fence?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then. Just with the conditions as per the report, then, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay with the staff?
Yes.
And we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. You're opposed?
Yes.
So one opposed.
Thank you.
And that is the last item on the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
One second.
That's right.
You will stand adjourned.
Very much.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
They ain't got none of them dollars.
I don't think it's in the nature of Thirty-A to build so close to Thirty-A. That's a heavily rural area right there next door, all those windows and parking, the noise, the...
Of course, I got to go home.
All the construction is going on.
I might go by the way of free pork.
It's the...
I'm going to get some.
It's about seven, seven, eight, nine, and I just think it's going to be...
I'm sure I'll send it to you.
I'm sure.
Go on.
I'm sure.
I'll see you in a minute.
Yeah.
I'll leave it there.
The ministers can't.
Yeah.
They just pull it there, but...
Yeah.
Anyway.
Everybody gets different.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I was already counting.
Sorry.
Five, three, when I saw David.
I'm glad there's...
How is it? Is it nine or an even?
Nine.
Nine, I want to introduce myself. David Kramer.
That's all right.
Well, I would have forgotten if we were in math.
I'm sure each other does, I'm sure.
Mr. Watt, is there, is there a sidewalk?
You're good?
Yes.
Well, absolutely.
I don't know, it's a good, it's a nice, my friend.
It's just, it's just...
All right.
Because of New York.
We definitely get...
All right.
Mr. Watt, is there, is there a sidewalk?
You're good?
Yes.
Well, absolutely. I don't know, it's a good, it's a nice, my friend.
Well, absolutely.
So, because this is actually, I mean, so...
Well, I mean, once we get, once we get to our team, we'll start selecting our own initiative.
Our first step.
Our first step, yes.
It's one of them.
I won't say it's one of them.
Or somebody else.
It's a, after that, or something.
Well, actually, our, 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 I think, I think, I think, I think, with our, 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 with